So this presentation is on the budget development process, fair student funding, the stages that we go through for budget development, and also a little bit on the budget engagement, district level budget engagement. So I'm gonna start with fair student funding. So what is fair student funding? We're one of the few districts, not just in Maryland, but in the country, that does a weighted funding model, where we essentially allocate resources to schools and school leaders. Thank you. Yeah, to schools and school leaders, based on the breakdown of students within their specific building. So most districts, as you know, do staffing model. They allocate staff for principals. They let them know, this is what you're gonna have in your building. We kinda do the opposite, as you well know, where we allocate resources based on, not just the number of kids they have, but the makeup of the kids in their schools. So, fair student funding, the reason behind that is, you know, because we know that school leaders have a better sense of what their needs are in their community and what the needs are in their school building. Equity, in terms of distributing the resources based on the needs of the students, and also empowerment and accountability, allowing the school leaders to take ownership of their environment and ultimately have responsibility for the results driven by that. And also an opportunity for innovation or creativity. It allows school leaders to think outside the box, in terms of how they allocate their resources, instead of someone dictating to them specifically how that's gonna be done. And also transparency. So we were very public with the budgets for the individual schools. School leaders have to engage with the community members, which we'll go through, sorry, we'll go through the process on how that takes place. They're gonna explain what their funding is, how they're allocating their funding, and they're held accountable to their community members as well, as part of the process. So, last fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen, we updated the fair student funding model for the first time in ten years. We updated the model to allocate weights differently from how we'd done it previously. Previously, we'd allocated weights just based on basic and advanced testing. We changed the model so we could incorporate things like poverty, concentrations of poverty. We still wanted to wait for gifted in advance. And this was something we determined on our own. We had a panel team from ERS come in, and we also met with, you know, communities across the district. We met with principals. We had, you know, a number of principal meetings, where they came in and provided input. We had teacher meetings. We had meetings in central office as well. The other commitment last year was that we put in a policy that said that at least once every four years, we were gonna review the model, that we weren't just gonna let it sit another ten years before we make updates to the model. That's not to say that during the ten years of the model, we did not make changes, but not wholesale changes to the level that we did in twenty So the next part of the presentation is the stages of school budget development. I'll start by saying that this used to be, more or less, a nine-stage process. Like, in reality, this is about a two-hundred-step process. The process plan, you know, is, you know, quite lengthy. But we kind of summarize into some of the major things, particularly the things that are more public-facing and community engagement-facing. The difference in the process, in those milestones, this year from last year, is, number one, the priority discussions. This was not something that was a part of the process previously. So I'm gonna go through that in a second. So stage one, the priority discussions. So essentially, this allows school leaders, before they receive their funding, an opportunity to engage their community members and discussion on what the priority should be for the upcoming fiscal year. This was a lot of feedback from community members, a lot of feedback from the board over the last few years, and this stemmed from us trying to make our engagements with the community members a lot more genuine. We'd heard previously a number of times that, you know, by the time we go and we create budget forums or engagements in the spring, a lot of decisions have already been made. A lot of the allocations have already been determined, and the community does not have an input, the opportunity to give input that can actually affect change in one way or the other. We know that there are rubs, in terms of timing, in terms of when we receive our funding allocation from the state, which we're largely dependent on, as three-quarters of our funding. And we know that that portion doesn't change. You know, if we were a district where we did not require input, you know, we were able to just put a budget together without school leaders giving input and going to your community members and getting the feedback that it takes, then we could've moved that part of the process up. If we were a district that we had a lot more money, and we weren't dependent on the funding that we received from the state and city, we could've done it even earlier, because we're not looking at the revenue as the starting point for our determination. But, things being the way that they are, we can't really move up the date for when we can make the financial portions of the decision. So we opened up earlier on in the process, so that both at the district level and the school level, we can start having discussions on what's important to the community members. So even before they see the numbers, or they see the figures, or they know exactly what the details are of their upcoming budget, they will, by this point in time, know what their enrollment is like. That's actually the process we're going through right now, so as of nine-thirty. And then through the month of November is when they start engaging their community members and their priority discussions. So, it's an additional engagement, and the purpose of the engagement, like I said, is so that we're having it at a meaningful point in time, where the information that is provided, both at the school and the district level, can actually be impactful. It can actually be implemented. Example of this, when we did the budget this past year in fiscal year twenty, we did the community-level engagements, both for schools and central office, for the central office ones. When we did the final budget presentation, we showed what the votes were, what the tally of the votes were, the top five things that a community member has selected in the surveys. And we also showed how those things were being integrated into the budget, so that it was not an empty promise. It wasn't just, come tell us what's important to you, and then, you know, we kinda shifted to the side, or we'll see what happens. We showed, you know, very specifically, the number of things that we put in place that were able to address the things that they selected as being priorities. The mandate, when we go through the priority process, for the schools, and also here in central office, for the chiefs and our leaders, is that we don't put anything in front of the community members for feedback on that we're not willing to go full-tilt on. We're not gonna put anything in front of anyone that's not genuine, that we can't actually do. Again, the whole basis is that the engagement is genuine. It's not gonna be what it was before, where, you know, we have a meeting for the sake of having a meeting, and people give feedback, and then nothing happens, or nothing comes from that feedback. That was the goal. So that's the updated first step in the process. What we have outlined here is the school-level process. So this is mirrored both at school and central. This is a school-level process that's on this slide. Stage two is the enrollment projections. So this is based on the nine-thirty enrollment. This is the process, essentially, where we take the enrollment from the current year, and based on a number of different factors, like what's going on in the community, what school openings, school closings, zoning changes, whatever factors that we know or are aware of, we adjust the projected enrollment for the schools based on that. At the district level, we've done a better job over the last few years. The last two years, we've come within a couple hundred kids of meeting the projected enrollment at nine-thirty. It's still extremely difficult at the individual school level to get it exactly right. We're still a school, a choice district. You know, parents and kids, they'll have the opportunity to choose where they wanna go to school in. As long as that's the case, you know, it's gonna be very difficult to nail down a specific school level where the enrollment ends up. But we're able to do a much better job now predicting at the district level, kind of where we think we're gonna end up. And that's not just done internally. For the enrollment projection process, we start with a numerical projection, which is a combination of a number of different factors. We look at everything from birth rates, the averages. We take different things into account, like I said, grade configurations, et cetera. We come up with a numerical projection, and we then share that projection with the school leaders, and also with parties in central office, like the ONI office and the planning office, and people who have information as to what may be impacted. We send these out to the school leaders, and we say, here are the numbers that have been generated. Here's what we think about that. Now tell us what you think. Do you agree? Do you disagree? We're also very upfront that the feedback that they give will not necessarily be accepted. Just because they say, I think I'm gonna have fifty more kids, doesn't mean, you know, the data justifies that. If, you know, more often than not, if everyone has their way with their requests, we'd probably end up with twice as many kids on paper in the district than what we actually end up having in real life. So we have to be very careful with what we take in, but we do give the opportunity for feedback. And the primary goal here is to identify things that we may not be aware of centrally, things that, you know, we may not have in consideration. We've had school leaders tell us about programs that they've done to engage, you know, kids over the summer, or different community members or partners they've worked with to increase enrollment, or even on the other end of it, where they had, you know, a block of row houses that's closed down and families have moved out, that they think could negatively impact. Or, you know, they're hearing from parents that, yeah, I know this school is great, but this school is actually a little bit closer, so I'm maybe gonna go over here instead. So they're hearing things and finding out information about their enrollment specifically that we may not be aware of, so we try to take that into account as much as possible. Next stage, and these are going sequentially, more or less, but these things, there is some overlap between a lot of these items, as you're well aware. Well, next stage is the school performance plan. So this is essentially where schools, you know, put together the information on how they're gonna be building, not just their budgets, but their academic plans going forward. Everything that's encompassed in developing and growing their school. It's metric basis, based on what their performance has been in prior years, and they use that as the basis with the feedback from the priorities, with their projected enrollment, to sort of put together a plan of how they are gonna allocate their resources to meet the needs of their specific school and their school community. Next, we have the school budget forums. So I mentioned before that there are three main points at the school level of community engagement. So the first one, as we discussed, was the priority discussions, which was new this past year. The second one is the school-community budget forums. So this is usually in the spring. This is gonna be in February, for the most part, the first and second week of February. And this is where schools have received their allocations. They know what their dollars are gonna be. And then they're engaging with their SFCs and with their other partners and their communities and their families and their teachers and the various groups to say, now that I know my dollars, here's what the initial plan should be for the school. And those various parties are giving input into developing those plans. So this is the second touch point. The first point, they have the priority discussions, where we discuss at large, without specific figures, what our goals are. At this point, we have specific figures, so we're trying to make those goals actionable. So this builds off the first interaction that they had with the priority discussions. Next, we have budget collaboratives. So I described before the various reasons why we have a fair student funding model, you know, transparency and autonomy and freedom and creativity and all the rest of those things. But we do provide those things within a comfort bubble, so to speak. We do not allow school leaders, or put them on an island, I should say, to make these decisions on their own. They have to be supported in these decisions. The responsibility for what takes place in the school does not rest solely on them. It rests, a lot of it rests with us in central office and the various departments that support, whether it's in human capital, whether it's in finance, and all the different things that we do. So we bring all these folks to the table to help develop that budget for the school. So the school is not left in isolation to just make up a budget and then held accountable for making up that budget that may violate something, whether it's in COMAR or in some bargaining union agreement, whatever the case is. We sit with them and go through the different variables, the different options, to provide whatever other supports that can be provided. So it's not just about saying, these are the rules you can't break, but these are also different ways that you can look at some things. These are ways that you can incorporate funds from different sources, whether it's concentration of poverty, whether it's title grants, whether it's, you know, fair student funding or special ed, like, the different ways that these things can interact, and the ways that we can kinda use these things to leverage one against the other. So they're providing support in these instances. They're providing support with personnel decisions and their help throughout the process, and very much so by their ILED, more so than anyone else. They usually do pre-collabs with the ILED. They'll bring in a few key staff members, whether it's their budget analysts and their human capital specialists, and they'll do a pre-collab to help plan out in advance what they're gonna do at their collaboratives. But the collaboratives, they sit down at the table with the staff from all those different offices. So we have like fifteen, sixteen different people at the table. And usually, we have about four or five collabs going on at the same time. So we have, it's pretty hectic, 'cause we bring in every single school. A few years ago, we used to bring in maybe thirty schools or sixty schools, but I think one of the most important changes we've made over the last few years was bringing in every single school. It's not just challenging for school leaders when, you know, their dollars are low, or their resources are not what they expected to be. There are challenges inherently also in having more dollars than you may have expected, or more dollars than you might have initially had a plan for spending, making sure those resources are allocated, you know, in a means that meets the goals that you should have set out in your SPP and also the goals of your community members. So it's not something that, you know, just because they have money, they're fine. You know, that's, I think, a bit of a misnomer. There's a lot of support that needs to be provided, making sure those resources are well-used. So we bring in every single school, regardless of, you know, where they fall in enrollment, regardless of where they fall in dollars. Next is the community budget review. So this is the third part, as I mentioned, of the community portions of the engagement. Again, just to reiterate, I know I'm being redundant, but the first was the priority discussions. The second, when they got their budget, was their community forums, where they say, here's what I'm gonna present. This third meeting is after they've had their budget collaborative. They go back to community and say, this is what the end result was. So they may have come in with a plan from the community as to how they're gonna spend their dollars, and they sit at the table with the various people. You know, finance might say, no, you can't use these dollars for that, or title one might say, no, this can't be used for that, 'cause this would be supplanting. AC might say, no, you can't eliminate this position, 'cause you have this. Whatever the case is, we're gonna have the various different rules, or COMAR, you can't eliminate this position, 'cause you need to have arts, et cetera, et cetera. So they say, well, this is what the final result is. This is what we sat down, what we decided upon. This is what we submitted. And the community gets to see what that final budget is. So again, it's not a surprise. It's a process of interaction and engagement. It's a two-way street throughout the process. It's supposed to be. So that's something that we hold very seriously, and we've tightened on the last few years. A lot of feedback that we've received, as you're aware, is from parties who've said that, you know, that engagement has been spotty. Not every school has done it consistently, or sometimes it's been disingenuous, where, you know, they had the meeting just for the sake of having the meeting. So that's something that we've cracked on specifically, and we're working on again further this year, with the community and engagement office in particular, who are very much spearheading that portion of it. But we're looking at standardizing the templates. We're providing templates and guidelines for how those engagements should take place, what should happen. Here's a model of what it should look like, and we give them, you know, sample documentation of what they should be handing out, how they should be collecting the information, what a flyer should look like, all the rest of that support. And then we also try to have, as much as possible, people from central office attending those meetings, at least someone who can, whether it's FCE, or even if FCE can't do it, have someone attend the meeting to be able to stand in and say that this was actually taking place the way that they said it took place. We don't just have, you know, names signed up on a sheet. So I will readily admit it's a work in progress. There are a lot of schools to cover, especially for the amount of staff that we have available, particularly in FCE to support. But it's definitely a goal that we're growing and working towards this year, as an emphasis for this year as it was last year. And I think we did a lot better with it last year than we had done in previous years as well. I would think you guys got less complaints this past year than you did previously. Next is the budget approval process. So the same folks who are sitting at the table for the collaboratives are the same ones who are going through and approving the budgets and through an approval queue. This sounds more or less like, you know, paperwork, but it's a very important part of the process. It's making sure that we're adhering to all the various processes and rules, and these are done sequentially. So it goes through, you know, special ed before it goes to AC, before it goes to finance, and each change can kind of affect it down the line. So if something happens, you know, where we get to the end of the line, and something has to be updated, a funding type is wrong, or whatever the case is, it has to kind of be kicked back to the front of the line again, so that whatever change is made is again reviewed by everyone through the process. So again, we're not putting school leaders in a place where, you know, they're cast off on an island by themselves. They have to be supported through the process, even when they do make a decision, one way or another. Someone else is, you know, casting eyes on it, or giving support on it, or saying, this is okay. So it's not just, you know, this is what the principal did. Next stage of the process, this is, you know, part that you're very familiar with, is the board budget vote. This is where we present all the wonderful things that we've done with the budget process, and you get to vote on it and say whether or not you like it, and if we're gonna pass the budget. This portion is something that we've adjusted also over the last couple of years. We've sort of adjusted the timeline so that there's a window, a two-week window usually, between when we present the budget and when it's voted on, so that there's another opportunity for community feedback. And we're very upfront with that feedback, where this is the final budget. You know, this is not the point in time where we're saying, we're gonna, you know, change the way we fund everything. But if you have feedback on what was presented, or there are things that you want the board to be aware of on what was presented, this is when you have the opportunity to do so. If you can attend the meeting where it was presented, and we try to do it in at least one other location, other than central office, so people have the opportunity to come in, see what's on the budget, it's the exact same presentation as what's presented initially, and then give feedback on that, whether in person or via email or phone call sometimes, and that we can respond to as many of those things as we get, or whatever questions you have as well, the board has. When they review the budget, we can respond to those things and provide additional information before we have the final vote. So that is, that, we haven't changed that formula too much in the last two years, and we think that can, that portion worked a little bit better. What we did adjust the past year is, we reduced the number of those engagements in between. Two years ago, we had, I think, eight of those engagements, and I don't think we had more than like five people attend anyone. We probably had more board members and staff members than community members. And, you know, that gives me a bit of a segue for the district-level priorities, which I'm gonna get to in terms of how we're doing that this year. But we wanted, we made it more concise this past year, and we were a little more strategic with the locations that we chose, and the turnout was a little bit better than what it had been previously as well. Next stage, second to last, is staffing, arguably the most important stage of the process. And I think we all know, ideally, if we had our way, the budget process would be a lot more truncated or earlier on, so that we can get to this part of the process earlier, so that we can have the opportunity to choose, you know, high-quality staff. So that's something that we focus on every year, is trying to look at ways that we can adjust the process, or what we could do in terms of staffing, that does not have to be dependent on the final budget output. But a lot of that, again, is dependent on the fact that school leaders are making decisions, you know, in collaboration with central office as to what their staffing is gonna look like. So once the budget is voted on and finalized, and budgets are passed, we go through the hiring process of finding staff. But that process, in reality, like I said, starts much earlier. And last, the part we're actually going through right now for the fiscal year twenty budget is the enrollment adjustments. I think if you ask anyone, this is probably the most painful part of the process, but in reality, this is probably the most equitable part of the process. This is actually where we take the projections and the information from the spring, that, you know, at that point, our best guess is as to where kids are gonna land. And now at nine-thirty, we know where these kids really are. Our premise is always, we fund the kids where they are. So if the kids move from school A to school B, we move the money from school A to school B. Nobody likes it at all. School leaders don't like it. Central staff don't like it. Community members don't like it. You know, staff members in the school specifically don't like it, 'cause you've been teaching in a school for a month, you've established a relationship with the kids, and now you're being told, potentially, you may have to move to a different school. So it's nerve-wracking for all involved, but this is part of the commitment in terms of how we allocate funding where the student is. If a student, if a school's enrollment goes up, we move the funding so that they have the ability to hire staff to match the enrollment. If a school's enrollment goes down, theoretically, on paper, you don't require as much staff, because your enrollment has decreased. We know in real life, the reality of that is a little bit different. You know, sometimes there are structures or things in place in a school, or how a school has built their system up, that make it very difficult to change the staffing once you're like a month into the school year. So this is something that, you know, for fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year, we're really looking towards maybe ways that we can, if not necessarily work around this, but improve this process to reduce the pain involved, while still maintaining the equity necessary for it to work as a fair student funding model. So we've actually started a discussion group on trying to figure out our brainstorm ideas for this, and part of this, the reason why the discussion is starting now already for next year, not just 'cause we're already in fiscal year twenty-one budget development, but school leaders would have to be aware of what the process is when they're developing their budgets in spring. It's not something we can spring on them next year and fall and say, surprise, we're doing enrollment adjustments differently. 'Cause how they build their budgets in the spring will depend on how these things are gonna be taking place in the fall. So we, that's why we're trying to work on this now and see what we can come up with. Some of the things that we've discussed are whether we set a threshold, where we say, you know, if the change is below a certain dollar amount, that we don't exercise that difference. But also, we know that there's the other end of the spectrum, where, you know, their school leaders, rightfully so, will fight for every dollar associated with every single kid, because things are so tight across the district. So we expect, you know, to get some pushback either way. We haven't got to the point yet where we're going out for feedback. We're still brainstorming ideas, but we will be looking to engage both the board and the community on ideas for how we can probably move those things around going forward. So those are the ten stages, as I discussed, broadly. The thing I touched on earlier with regards to priorities is also applicable to central office. So this very wordy slide is a discourse on what we do for central office in terms of priority engagement. And Commissioner Reed is laughing, 'cause he knows I hate reading from the slides. So I'll summarize. Like I said, for the schools, it's the same thing. We ask central office leaders to choose the priorities that they wanna put in front of the communities that are genuine, can actually be done. And like I said, last year, we put those in front. Community voted on them, and we showed how these were implemented in the budget. So this was something new last year. This year, the only major change to that, well, there are a couple tweaks to that, incremental improvement, you hear me say that a lot, a couple tweaks to that this year, one of which is, we're changing how the information is gathered initially from the chiefs. Last year, we didn't standardize it very well. You know, some people had priorities that were sort of like one-stop shop, like, you know, it's very broad, it's not very, doesn't get into the weeds a whole lot. And then there were others that were a lot more specific and, you know, detailed, multiple steps. And one of the things that we wanted to look at this year was making sure that these priorities, when we're discussing them with the community, are not delineated based on office, like, it's not an academic priority, or an IT priority, or a finance priority. Because as we well know, a lot of these things, and this is why we have a central office, these things are co-mingled. These things don't operate in isolation. A priority for, you know, academics in terms of, you know, having a specific program might involve human capital having the ability to staff that specific program, might involve IT having the infrastructure to support that specific program, might involve finance having the ability to have a procurement, to have a vendor support that program. So there are a lot of different bits and pieces that fit together. So we wanted to make sure we broke the delineation, and cabinet, that's gonna be a lot of cabinets work, is working hard to kind of cluster these things together and figure out how they correlate. And also, it's not, I, we know it won't be perfect, but there should also be at least a tangible segue between the district's overall blueprint priorities and the discussions for these district-wide priorities, and further to that, the discussions for the school-level priorities. There should, these should all kind of tie together with the same ecosystem. It's not, as we well know, it's not gonna be perfect. We've gone through the process year after year, where we try to tie different things to the blueprint. You know, it's not always neat and tidy, but they are the umbrella that everything exists underneath. So particularly with the district-level priorities, the cabinet priorities, we want to see how those are represented as a subset of the overall district's priorities. Show one unified direction in the thinking, and then also how that trickles down to schools. So that's the other part of it. In terms of the actual engagements, last year, we had four. So we had, the first one was at Mervo, not very well attended. We didn't give a lot of lead time necessarily in terms of the first meeting. We had a lot more staff than we had community members. As we progressed throughout, the attendance got much better. I know a lot of the board members were there. The last one we had was the Spanish-speaking one, which was very well attended. One of the things that we noticed there, though, was, that was, from an engagement standpoint, it appeared to be a somewhat underserved portion of the community. A lot of things that it came to us with at that budget discussion were not necessarily budget-related. There are, you know, behavior or interactions with principals, or transportation, or different things. So, but we had a few staff members on hand who were knowledgeable enough from FCE office to be able to direct them to the appropriate people to get the support. So knowing that, and knowing how the engagements took place last year, this year, we're trying to be a little more strategic with how we're doing them this year. We're, again, having four, but we're tailoring those engagements to different subsets. So for example, the first one that we're planning, and these are all gonna be in the month of November, the first one that we're planning is a student engagement. We did not do a student engagement last year. We had done one a couple years prior. So a student-level priority discussion, which is being led by Rashad at FCE, and he has a wonderful student engagement program, so we're building off of that. I sat in the meeting, and, you know, they're saying, asking me, how does budget wanna do this? So how does finance wanna do it? I was like, this is the completely wrong approach. If you're having engagement with students on this, how, you tell me how I need to engage with your students, and how can I piggyback on what you're already doing? I think we've had the discussion before, where, you know, if we had our way, we wouldn't put the word budget or finance in any of these, 'cause we've seen the effects. Sometimes, you know, people see some of these information, these flyers, or, you know, events, and they see the word budget, and, you know, regardless of whether we, how many people do we have today? As an example, you know, we have a few hardcore folks who are here and turned up, but we don't have the turnout that we would normally expect for something, you know, budget-related, with the impact of a budget-related item. So if I could strike the word budget off of it, I absolutely would. So for the engagement events, the priority engagement events, we're looking to not just piggyback, but make sure that we're integrated into those different subsets. So the first, like I said, is the student engagement. We're having another multilingual engagement. We're having another engagement that's gonna be focused on a lot of our partners, between P-CAB and C-CAB and the various groups. And I'm speaking slightly ahead of myself, because some of these are still in the works, they're still being scheduled. We're still, you know, in discussion with these groups in terms of the timing and the locations and all the rest of that, but just giving you an overview. And then the last one will be the more broader, you know, general engagement, you know, kind of open to anyone else. So we're having the same number, but we're hoping that by targeting and interacting and getting support from specific groups, that we have, A, better attendance, but also that we're not just reiterating the same thing over and over again. We went, if you went to the four meetings last year, the first three were exactly the same. We went through the same script. We went through the same priorities. We asked the same questions. And sometimes, we had a lot of people attending the same meetings. They would come to the same meeting in the three or four different locations. So here, we're trying to be a little bit more strategic and hope that we're able to target feedback from a broader spectrum of our base. You know, if we got, last year, we got responses from, I think it was just over two hundred or so folks on the survey, but, you know, for seventy-eight thousand kids, you know, even if not every kid, as we know, is gonna have a one-to-two ratio in terms of the adults in their lives, that's still a lot of folks that we're not hearing from. So we're trying to broaden the spectrum for how we receive feedback. We're also trying to make these a lot more interactive, how we're presenting the surveys. We're trying to give the opportunity for folks to see it without having to be there, whether we're streaming through Facebook Live and other means. So we're trying to be a lot, like I said, a little more strategic with how we're going through these engagements. I don't know yet what's gonna work. We're gonna kind of take our best practices and see what worked, what didn't work. If, you know, maybe one ended up being underrepresented based on an area or a specific group, then we can kind of tweak it next year, but that's the plan for this current year. And that's it. Any questions?
I guess the first is, I have more than one.
I guess the first is, I have more than one. So most of this is pros. I guess in terms of data, in terms of numbers, we'll start to see that in April?
The, for the engagements.
I guess in terms of the cost and how it's being.
Yes, yes. So the initial stages of the, specifically for the priority discussions, we deliberately in the, in the earlier stages, November stages, we don't base it on um dollars. By which I mean, we don't want every priority that's presented to be something that is driven by a dollar figure. Not every priority needs to be funded in the same way. Maybe we can use general funds, maybe we can use title funds, maybe some of it is reallocating current funds. Maybe some of it we have to say, well, what is it we're replacing with this as opposed to adding on? What did we not do as well that we could strengthen? So it's not all driven necessarily by dollars at the onset. The second phase of the cabinet engagement, after we've finalized what that list is and we're getting feedback from the community as to what's important, is to figure out then in, in detail how we make these things a reality. And part of the reason why that's delayed is that these things kind of play off against each other. We might have an initial list where it says this is, these are the, you know, fifteen things that we wanna do. And then the priority is the top five, and then one of them ends up being significantly more expensive than the others. How can these things be supported based on the ones that we're not doing or the ones that we're already doing and how these things play against each other? So at the onset, uh I don't believe we have enough information to make all the financial decisions that we have to make. Especially before we hear from the community as to what is the most important. Because I think, well, we think generally the dollars should follow the discussion in terms of what's important and the priorities. It's the same premise that we make with the fair student funding model, where we say the most important thing is kids, so the dollars follow the kids. And the discussion of priorities, we, when we find out what the most important priorities are, the dollars should follow those priorities.
And probably I should ask this question first then. I guess basically you have a baseline budget, but then you have maybe a hundred eighty disparate approaches because basically roughly a hundred eighty schools. So there's no one size fits all. So it's, it's almost like making a salad, so to speak. I mean, how do you go about this?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very fun simultaneous equation. So it, it's, no, you're really, you're, every, because every string you pull, you know, kind of draws from something else. So you're, you're manipulating different things at the same time. And not just between the schools, but between central and the schools or between different offices and central. So we're, again, we, we've heard the pie is the pie, the pie is still the pie. And as we pull on one thing, um they kind of draw against the other. So for example, uh when we did the updated fair student funding model, there's some things that we made a priority. We said, for example, poverty's gonna be a priority, we're gonna allocate money to poverty. Well, what that meant is that there were a lot of schools who did not have, well, not a lot, there were some schools who did not have a high poverty rate. So money ended up moving from those schools to the schools who did. So as you kind of draw on one thing, it pulls on the other. There is absolutely no ideal, and we do not perpetuate an ideal for schools in terms of how their budget is set up. The closest thing that we have is the baseline services fund, where we have a model that says essentially, based on the number of kids you have in your grades, based on your overall enrollment. Um you should have an AP if you get to this side, you should have a guidance counselor if you get to this size, you should have, you know, not more than twenty five kids in a class, etc., blah, blah, blah. So we have an entire model that says, based on your specific enrollment, this is what the ideal should be for you. And then what we do is we said, we make sure you have the dollars to do that. But how you do that is up to you. You absolutely do not follow that idea because not, there, there's almost no school, I could say, that can follow the ideal. Because every single school's situation is different. Even if they have enough money to be able to do everything that's, you know, in the prescribed model, what that school leader and their community may wanna focus on specifically for that school could be tailored based on, you know, what's taking place right now, like we said, the data and the SVP. Maybe we didn't do so hot in third grade math and we wanna focus on that. So there's no way on the onset, in terms of the allocation of resources, that we can make that decision without getting into the school level and school leader and community feedback portion of how they wanna place those dollars. It's, it's the essential premise of the, the whole funding model.
Uh I guess the last one is, okay, you roughly had, we have seventy eight thousand kids. We had two hundred people that participated in the survey. You probably had a hundred people at least the first three engagements.
Yeah, yeah.
What can, you're a budget guy, you're a numbers guy. What can the system do to help you in terms of the community side because of people aren't showing?
Well, I think a, a lot of work, and, and I am a numbers guy and, but that's why I work with the folks in like FCE and communications and the wonderful team that we have there, folks who specialize in figuring out outreach, figuring out how to, you know, make things look the way that they should look to attract the eye and to attract attention, to deliver the right message. So I defer to these guys a lot in terms of how they present the message, how they select the locations. They build long-term relationships with community partners. So it's not just like, you know, we have this coming up, these are established relationships that they've had over a period of time. So, and they've done a lot of work, and we have a new chief now in, in that office, that they've done a lot of work in terms of making that a lot more integrated. And not just integrated in terms of what we do in the budget process, but as you well know, we have a number of different engagements across the district. So this is something else that we've kind of been pushing on this year, and again, we're not there yet, but our engagements to a certain extent kind of cannibalize each other as well. Like we have things within close proximity or within, you know, close timing of each other or delivering similar messages. So we've been looking at how do we kind of capitalize on the, the specific instances and tailor the messages to those. So we're not bringing out someone for a budget meeting on one day for one, you know, portion or one forum, and then we do it in a week later for something else. And then they're sitting there confused, kind of like, I thought we just spoke about this, or what's the difference between this one and that one? So we're trying to be more thoughtful and integrated with how these things kind of play together.
Commissioner Frank?
One question to follow up on, Commissioner Reed. In terms of the relatively low turnout, but it grew over time. Um I'm sure you've given thought to why that is, and it could be a lot of things. It could be the way we're reaching people, it could be a sense of futility, that there's no point in coming out. It could very well be that people have a greater sense of confidence in the district and in the leadership, and they don't necessarily feel like they have to come out. Um and it could be a lot of other things, and I, and you can't survey people who don't come. But I wonder, you know, that spectrum, where this might fall, or is it all of the above?
It's a combination, uh but despite it being fairly low at the onset last year, it was still, you know, significantly better than what it was the year before. And if you guys remember, a lot of meetings where it was just us, you know, we, we did the presentation, we had a couple of board members and a couple of staff members and, you know, that was just it. And we tried them in different locations like that year where we did like seven or eight of them between the, the presentation and the vote. We tried them in different locations to um draw on different communities. Uh we've broken it down to uh about three different things. So one is how the meeting is communicated. So again, like I said before, if I could slash the word budget or finance, you know, off of these things, I think that's, that's a big plus. Because a lot of the times, um the labeling that we put on it, if we say, you know, we're having a budget meeting and, and we've heard this from folks in different times. You know, what does that mean for me? What does that mean for my school? How can I impact this? You know, we're talking about billions, we're talking about millions. Like, these are things that, you know, I do not necessarily have control over, or they don't, are not aware of what control they have on that process. So part of us addressing that was changing the framing with the discussion on the priorities. Also a part of that, I think, and this is, you know, me speaking, was I think us having a genuine process this past year, where we were able to show that we, we actually used the feedback. It wasn't just, come, tell us what you think, and then nothing comes of it. We were able to actually show, this is what you said, this is where we spent the money, so that there was a direct correlation between those things. It doesn't address everything, and not everything that you asked for, we were able to do. But we're still able to show that at least the input that we were able to receive from the few folks we did, that we were acting on that. So I think building that trust over time will be important. But as we diversify how we engage and the different types of engagements that we have, I think decentralizing budget engagement is impor, is important. So that it's not even budget engagement, it's, it's school engagement, it's, you know, district engagement. And budget will be a part of that, finances will be a part of that, an important part of that, but it's not the only thing you're there for, it's not the only thing you talk about. You're there to find out about the well-being of the, of the district and the well-being of your child as a member of the district. So I think decentralizing that will also be important.
And I would, I would agree with you and hope that in the um in the advertising or in the communication of this, that we use some of those uh results that you mentioned. Some examples of how we use the input in the current budget as, as, as um an enticement to encourage folks to come and be a part of this process. I also wanna um thank you too in terms of really expanding on, because I really think the school level, starting with the school level and focusing on that is gonna be important, and expanding on that this year. Because I know last year when we started, people had the numbers. So there was still sort of the question of how much input. And I think starting with the priority discussion without any numbers really gets to that, that point of what do we, what do we need here in our community for our children? And then adding the numbers later. So I hope, um again, um those three, those three that you mentioned, I think we really need to hone in on those three school-based community uh sessions.
Yeah, and I think we have to be honest with that too. Like when we, when we have those engagements, we're very frank about what can be done, what may, I mean, this could be the plan, but, you know, things can change and things can happen, and we have to be very upfront with that. We're not, you know, misleading folks with what's gonna happen or how it's gonna happen, so that they understand how the process works. And things like this where we explain the steps and how these things kind of tie together, I think feed into that too.
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you. Um would it be possible to share with us what that ideal template is, so that we can know?
Community, the school engagements?
Um and simply because my guess is most principals will use that as a start point to begin discussions of deviation, so we know where, where they're starting. Um and then also wondering, uh and certainly don't expect you to have the information now, but at the end of the budget cycle, I'll ask the question again. Uh this is a very labor-intensive process. And we are not overflowing with human capital in this building and supports. So if we could figure out sort of what is the actual cost of this process versus a cost of a process where we simply say, here's your discretionary money above and beyond your standard of care for an art teacher, you know, twenty five students or less per class, an assistant. So those threshold mandatories, um is there a way, you know, so that we can really do a very conscientious decision about fair student funding? Is it the right way to move forward, or is it costing us too much to do this process and not necessarily creating more autonomy at the school level? So we can then see what, what principals are doing with their autonomy, um and maybe even get a process in place to talk to the principals about, yes, we understand that you want autonomy, but what does that mean to you? Um what does that mean autonomy in staffing? Does that mean autonomy over your whole budget? Or as many principals have shared with me, just take the mandatory stuff off the top and just tell me what I can do with my three hundred thousand or my million, depending on school size. So at the end, would like to see sort of a forensic of, of process costs.
I'm smiling because you're touching a little bit on some of what we've already started to discuss in terms of our next um model update, like when we look, like we said, at least once every four years. What we plan on looking at in terms of moving forward. Is the way we're allocating resources right now, the best use, I think one of the primary questions, best use of school leader time and abilities. You know, having to micromanage some of the OTPS items, other than personnel, sorry, you know, like we've heard agents about ordering toilet paper and all the rest of those things. How many of those things are really the best use of school leader's time with everything else that they have going on? And is this necessarily, our, our goal when we updated the model was to have a more equitable formula. Did we achieve that? And I think part of that is properly defining as a district what equity means, which is something, it's a broader scope of work that Dr. Durand and, you know, the team is working on. And everyone understanding equity and everything through an equity lens. And how does that then shape how we distribute funds or what we consider equity through the allocation of our resources, so.
I would also just say that I think in that forensic, we're going to need to also differentiate what the profile of principal and school is. Because um I can find five principals to give an opinion on this across every possible answer across the spectrum. What usually is the deciding factor is the size of the school. So if I am a K through eight with three hundred and twenty kids, it really doesn't matter. Like discretion is non-existent because I am treading to keep my head above water. If I am a third-year principal, second-year principal with five hundred kids in a K through eight, it might not matter as much anyway, because I'm trying to make sure that my school culture is together. If I am a ten-year veteran of a fast improving school with documented student achievement gains with eight hundred and fifty students in a K eight school, then heck yeah, I want it all. I don't want just what the given is, because I have figured out how to get people in. I know, I want, I want autonomy over every single position. I have proved that I can move student achievement. And frankly, I don't want you locking anything. So I think when we do the forensic, we're gonna have to go to the next level of detail, which I think is a natural iteration of the maturation of using, of, of using fair student funding. Because at the beginning, the theory of change, and I can just say this because I was, I came in as part of it, right? Was you give everybody, you give every school leader autonomy, and they will make the decisions. I think the next iteration of the, of the answer to that question is which school leaders, under which conditions, right, actually maximize autonomy? And, and so instead of doing a fallback, really, you know, to push to Commissioner Hassan's point about a, a forensic. When I think forensic, I, I think context and differentiation. Because I was in a school today with a leader who matches that last profile, who every single position, don't lock anything for me. Because I know year to year, because that, that principal knows the quality of the staff, of the positions that they're able to fill. So if you force me to have a full-time uh art teacher and I have a, you know, Commissioner McFadden protege, who is an amazing music teacher, and you're forcing me by saying it's a given that I now need this for my art teacher, and I only have a budget where I have to choose between one or two, then what you view as locked and taking it off my plate, I view as digging into the details of frankly what has been a demonstrated success in growing schools. So I think we've gotta have real discussions about readiness for leaders to be able to maximize and move away from a one-size-fits-all, which is where and I don't wanna say one-size-fits-all, I mean, Dr. Alonsen's a lot more nuanced than that. But it really was a, a, an overriding theory of action that assumes that every leader has the capacity and the budget to be able to make those kind of decisions. If you're a K eight with three hundred and twenty kids, I don't care how skilled you are. And I talked to two of them yesterday, and they're, they're not asking for more autonomy or more locked positions. They're saying, should we even be open? Because I can't give middle schoolers, you know, and I mean, it's, that's hard for a school leader to say, should my school even exist? But the way that they're saying it is, they know they are not providing middle grades kids with the kinds of options that they should be able to, but not by virtue of their skill. By virtue of, I got three hundred and twenty kids and I've got two sections, two teachers per grade level, does not a robust six-through-eight middle grade series of options make? So I just, so I agree with the forensic piece, I just think we, we need to name that level of differentiation which is bubbling to the surface, because I'm not hearing it from every principal. There's some principals who will fight tooth and nail to keep it. There are others who are saying, give me locked positions, because they can't afford to do it, and they feel like if we give them the baseline, then they won't have to struggle anymore, right, to figure out how they're gonna piece it. So I think like understanding the drivers of why, because I think there's many whys as to why some people are saying, take back the autonomy. Some are saying, take back the autonomy, because I don't got the money to do what you want me to do with what I have. And until you give me that, I don't need autonomy, because there's nothing I can do with it. So I think we just have to get under the hood when we're asking.
Absolutely, and that's, to my point, I just wanted to make sure, so yes, absolutely, and, and I think earned autonomy, there's nobody here that's, that's gonna trigger anything for, Linda, are you good with that? That earned autonomy is, is something where we need to look. I just wanted to flag looking at the district cost as part of that analysis so that we can get a better handle on how to be verisimely responsible.
But, but the, I mean, I'm just chiming in from what both of you said, I mean, I'm looking at it, it's, it's really a dance between autonomy and check and balances. I mean, it's like, the system has to continue to have check and balances, but some people can get autonomy because they've earned autonomy. So it's, it's a nuance, it's a nuanced dance. Yes, nuance, yeah, it's a nuanced dance.
I mean, as somebody who has founded schools, right, autonomy is no fun. If you have nothing to do with, if you have no money to do anything with, right? So like, yeah, I had autonomy when we founded a two-campus K eight, and I had a ball picking out everything I wanted for my brand-new library. That is a heck of a lot different than not knowing, you know, and President Brown is here today. And we had a, a related conversation today, and so, believe me, you can come up and counter me if it's not. But like, we were having a conversation and we were trying to get under, when, when, when we're getting feedback from teachers, she's getting feedback from teachers saying, we need a math position, like we need a math position filled. What we were, what we were trying What we were, what we were trying to talk about the nuance with is that it's, you can't find a math teacher to fill an existing position, or is there not money for, right, the number of math positions? Did I represent it right, President Brown? That, that are there, and so that, I mean, I just wanna be plain from a ground-level perspective. Like, yes, it is about capacity, but I mean, I'll tell you, if, if I, if I went back to school leadership tomorrow, I'd say, no, I don't want autonomy when you give me two sticks to rub together. I, I don't wanna know autonomy, you, you give me the positions I need. That, that's no fun. Who the heck wants autonomy when you are scraping two nickels together? You give me autonomy, and I have to decide, ooh, do we want instrumental music, or do I want vocal music? That's a lovely choice to be able to make, but if you're not sure you have any music at all, that's no fun. I don't want autonomy with that. So I think we also have to get into the reality of, do we have the funds to support the theory of action? Because it's not fair to say principals don't have capacity if we have not given them enough funding. And I will also remind the board that last year, when ERS made the recommendation and worked with our team to come up with the new formula, I stated continually that the formula being built was being built for a future with sufficient funding. And I said that over and over again, it is documented and memorialized, that, that the current formula, the ability to see that differential in this year with no additional funding, we knew at the time we were building it, we were building it for a world where we might, might, live in a state that is actually going to fund schools the way that states that claim to care about education. Exactly, right? So Massachusetts, no disrespect, so on the rough days when, like, my kid's grandmother says, why don't you come back home? Right? It's because Massachusetts has, has passed and funded, and funded fully, two school funding formulas. And Maryland can't even pa, can't even fully fund the one they passed ten, fifteen years ago. So when we talk about having fun, well, you know, I, I'm not getting into that. And that's, that's why I say to people, I, I know what it looks like to live in places where people really value education, dislike pie-in-the-sky mess, I gotta tell you. I know what it looks like when you fund things that you say you care for, and I'll tell you now, it doesn't look like this.
So that's, I think that's a plug for all of us being advocates for, hopefully, the proposals that were, were discussed yesterday. I have Commissioner Richardson, then I'll come back to Commissioner Frank.
Okay, I just wanted, and perhaps this is for Commissioner Hassan, more, I was trying to connect in my head your question around the current process that Cortney has described for us tonight, and the conversation around autonomy. And I'm hoping that it doesn't mean that we don't do these touches that he's explained, because being a community person, I think that is important. And so I do under, I, I think I understand where you're going with that, but I don't wanna lose the spirit behind the district going out, and, A, working with principals, working with families, working with school leaders, because that matters, and I don't know how much that costs you to do, but that matters to me, so. So if you, yeah, thank you.
Sure, just respond, absolutely, and I wasn't, I wasn't talking about taking anything off the table at all, but merely just doing a, what does this cost us, in time, in human capital, in energy? And then if there were any areas that I would imagine looking at more closely as far as could we shift, it's the, it's gotta all get run through special education, it's gotta all get run through academics, it's gotta sit down and go hand over hand with each individual school, as I'm hearing, and these school clusters, which is, you know, two and a half months of time of the office. So I just, you know, just to get a handle, so that when something else comes to us and is, isn't earned autonomy, is that gonna actually take more time because of differentiation, or less, just, just looking for, just, not a judgment on any of it, just, what is it? Yep, absolutely, thanks for the question.
Thanks, Madam, Dr. Santelis, I agree with everything you said, particularly around the need for state support. But there is something that is in our control, and it's interesting that you raised it and how you raised it, and that is, small schools, small middle schools, with principals who feel they don't have enough resources to provide the experience that particularly middle schoolers expect and want, and I know that you want for middle schools. So in the context of our budget discussion, I do think that's an issue we've talked about in the past, and you've said publicly that this is a, a part of the budget in terms of making tough decisions, in terms of how we can allocate our resources more efficiently, and also provide better experiences for our kids. So I, I, I just wanna highlight that again, as we go through this budget process. It is a very tough decision, because small schools are beloved in many cases, but at the same time, the kids are not getting the enhancements and experiences that we all want for them, so, thank you for raising it.
Anyone else, or, okay, Commissioner McFadden?
Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. The individual school priority sessions that start in November, is there a list of those days? Or is it just free and open to individual schools to say, you have to have the meeting in November? Is there a list of the scheduled meetings?
The schools will be determining their schedule, but once it's finalized, it will be shared.
It'll be shared?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just, I cannot fully recall, but I think we did afterwards share the, the schedule of the engagements last year, yeah. Yeah, but we'll, we'll, we'll be sharing it, but we don't tell them when they're gonna have it. We give them a window within which they need to schedule it, they're gonna get back, they have a window with which they need to let us know that it's scheduled and what the date is, and then the window in which they need to have it.
Thanks.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'm going to the public comment. We do have two folks who had signed up earlier, and I see a few, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean for you to... You may, you know, it may be a question that's a little too far, far away, okay. We have two folks who signed up, I see a few others, and so I'm gonna just let you know that once we have the two who have signed, if someone else would, would like to say something, we'll give you that opportunity. First, I have Julia DeBussolo, did I say it correctly?
Yes.
Oh.
Thank you, DeBussolo.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. My name is Julia DeBussolo, I'm the Executive Director of Arts Every Day. We are a proud partner of Baltimore City Public Schools in putting forward the implementation of the Fine Arts Plan that was approved in 2017. Thank you, Dr. Santelis, for really pushing forward equitable access to the arts and moving the district closer towards Comer. Last year, there was a shift in pre-K through eight budget guidance, which has resulted in over sixty-four new fine arts teachers that have been hired across the district. This is a huge, huge win for Baltimore City Public Schools. But within that comes lots of opportunities to provide them with adequate support. And so I'm here tonight to ask you to prioritize the expansion of the Fine Arts Office at the central district level, so that we can provide better support to those fine arts teachers throughout the course of the school year. Ideally, there would be a specialist for each arts discipline, dance, theater, visual art, and music. But at the very least, we would love to see the addition of at least one staff person to that fine arts office. It's a very big job for a one-person office. And then lastly, we will be coming back with recommendations for improving equitable access to instrumental music. And we're looking specifically at those middle grades for that expansion, so we look forward to updating you on that.
Could you explain for me, I'm not an educator, but when you say you want an additional position added, is it a central office position?
Yes.
And, and what does that person do?
So the Fine Arts Coordinator is, right now, one person, Ms. Chanel Howard. She does a fantastic job, like a Herculean effort, in supporting over, I, I wanna say, a hundred and sixty teachers as of last year's numbers, I don't have updated numbers for this year, and four different disciplines. Chanel's background is in instrumental music and general music, but we have a huge number of specifically visual art teachers. So if I could recommend just one position being added, I would ask for a person with a background in visual art.
How does our support to them look? Like, what does that look like? What is she doing for these teachers?
She is overseeing curriculum development, she's providing professional development through systemic professional development days, and she's really the first call for teachers who are struggling in the classrooms. So she will often go out to provide observation support and offer assistance as best she can. But you can imagine, with over sixty new arts teachers this year, that is really limited. We have a one-year grant from the National Endowment for the Arts to work with Chanel in providing more wraparound support this year for those brand-new arts teachers. And that is taking the form of a professional learning community that we'll be meeting throughout the year. But that's a grant-funded, one-year opportunity.
Thank you so much.
So Commissioner Richardson, in most jurisdictions, there is a specialist or a person for each of the disciplines. And Julia's actually being modest, because in mu, music alone, you have instrumental, you have vocal, you have general. And Chanel was coordinating that for K through twelve. So for secondary offerings which go deeper, you have students that are taking IB or AP, you know, theory classes or history classes, so she's supporting all of that. Visual art, K-12, theater, K-12, dance, K-12. And it's, it's, I don't think it's effective, because she becomes very spread in what she is capable to do, even in the recruitment and the retention of teachers. I know we have a, a well-established human capital office, but she also plays a role in, in that, too. So she's spread fairly thin.
In comparison, one of the things that I checked in with Commissioner McFadden about, and I know if we look at some of our, what I would call colleague districts, right, so Anna Rundle and other districts, to our, our Office of One, those districts have offices from anywhere from six people, all the way up to ten, if you look at places like Anna Rundle. So, you know, the, this, again, I mean, in one that we've debunked, so it probably, but, but it still comes up, this idea that we are somehow top-heavy is just not true. And in every cut of the organization, it is evident that we are woefully below comparative districts of our size, both comparative urban districts, if you look at Council of Great City Schools districts, and our peer districts across the state, so.
And just to add on, to build on to what Commissioner McFadden was sharing, that there's also, by the, the lack of infrastructure at, at the top level, and Chanel's doing an amazing job, but there's also a lack of ability to pursue grants and seek community partnerships and do some more development to build and get places, because she's so busy just trying to get the day-to-day accomplished. But I would like to, I was gonna tell you this privately, but as long as we have it here. So I secured today for any of those sixty-four teachers who need assistance passing the praxis, they are welcome to audit the praxis reading or math courses at Morgan. So we will welcome them into that fold to help them get where they need to be, so.
That is fantastic news.
Big, big, big moment, so.
Exciting, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next person who signed up is Jill Warzer, a retired, one of our retirees, correct, Jill?
Theoretically.
Are you, are you still working?
No, I'm, well, yes, I'm, I'm technically retired, nineteen years in city schools. Came as music specialist nineteen ninety-seven. That job expanded to what Chanel's doing now, fine arts specialist. And I just wanna add, in addition to things you described, middle and high schools in Baltimore City have the opportunity to be, be part of a district-level adjudicated festival every year, which Chanel oversees for both band and choir. And there should be solo ensemble as well, but the organization of that has kind of escaped us the last few years. There used to be strings also, and then the citywide art exhibit. The adjudication, though, allows groups that get an A rating or a one rating to go to the state festival. And that would be true for individual students, too, in terms of the statewide organization. So it's sort of similar to athletics, if you could, you know, that kind of hierarchy. So we have that, but we're, a lot of our students are just missing that opportunity, because we, first of all, we don't have the programs. And I'm absolutely thrilled about the steps that we've taken this year to hire additional teachers, and I will be working as a mentor teacher, actually already am. Got a frantic email from a visual arts teacher the other day, how do I do my SLO? You know, so I gave her a recommendation. But it is a, a really diff, I did, as the fine arts one person, I did that for four of the nine years that I worked in central office, and it's, I was here all night, a number of times, quite a number of times, I have to tell you, putting all the pieces, even though I had organized arts teachers' teams to work on stuff, it was, it's just, yeah. If, if there can be an additional position, it would, it would be really helpful. Especially, we wanna retain these teachers, you know, get them through the praxis and get them off of the conditional list and so forth. I just wanted to put in a couple of plugs on the instrumental music scene. Dr. Santelis, I was remembering that during the rollout in May of 2018 of the Arts Education Plan, I believe you mentioned that you had an experience when you were teaching, that someone came to observe you, and you were particularly pleased that a student that wasn't always so responsive was, you know, very responsive that day, and you felt like you really were getting to face with that, and I'm sure that you were. But, but then the principal, or whoever was observing you, said, you know, that student is in your class attending today just because they wanna get to their trumpet lesson in the next period. So we're not reaching enough of our students. I think that we only have instrumental music in about five of our ninety schools that have element grade six, seven, eight. So we're missing an opportunity to have the light, and that, that light in the eyes that's gonna make that student engage in school generally. We know that from research, we know that from a lot of our own experiences. So I just wanted to put in my, my two cents on that. I will say, voice is the first instrument, but there's a lot of other instruments that we need to give our kids opportunities to engage with. And I know that in several years, we're gonna really see the difference that all of this engagement across the arts is, is gonna make in our schools in all the ways that you want and we want in the blueprint. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes?
And I'm not sure if it's for you, ma'am, or maybe Dr. Santelis, can you tell us how the Orchids program is doing as a partnership with the schools providing instrumental music? And the support that we're providing?
I don't know the number of schools this year, the best information that I have is that it was six or seven schools last year. There is a fee for schools to be involved in Orchids, there's, you know, money for that. It doesn't, it's not a free program. One of the biggest challenges with the arts program is, with the Orchids program, from my perspective, is the la, lack of its ability to be contiguous, to, to continue. In other words, a student is in the, playing at the six-through-eight, or, and if they change schools, they won't find it in the other school. They may not, they may go to a high school where there's no program. I think we've, ten of our twenty-five high schools right now have some kind of instrumental program. But particularly for strings, there's almost no strings at the middle or, or high school. There's only, the only high school orchestra we have is at School for the Arts right now. Yeah.
But just say, here, here, I mean, that, that's generally the place. We, as a district, support Orchids, so we, it's one of the investments that comes out of the central support for schools, so, and very much frankly, the same way that we support Baltimore School for the Arts as a unique program, even though it is additional cost. And I think Jill rightly pointed out that part of the challenge that they, that their leadership, and Raquel does an absolutely fabulous job, and I think they are working harder to help students make the connection, but, but she's absolutely right, if you, if you leave... If you, if you leave or change schools mid-year, right, that's really hard. You're not going to go and find, find it someplace else. What they have done, I would say, they have made more concerted efforts to make sure their students, that they do, I mean, very much like a lot of programs we have, where they actually help place their students in particular high schools, particular programs. So they do support a lot of their students, particularly the string students, in their applications to Baltimore School for the Arts. They have connections to Interlochen and some of the more nationally prestigious instrumental music connections. And so, you know, to the credit, to the credit of the Baltimore Symphony, they use their capital that they have nationally to, to connect kids. I think the overall challenge we have with, with music is, and particularly instrumental music, with, you know, that Orchids highlights, is a similar challenge that we have with world language and BIA. BIA has the same kind of challenge with young people who come out, for example, after eight years, they are fluent in Arabic. Where do you go in city schools to continue that? And if you, and they're doing what frankly, I did as a, as a school leader. They're doing what any school leader worth their salt would do, very similar to what the Symphony does, and they're finding the placements where they can. So some of the kids that come out of BIA that are fluent in other languages, they connect them to frankly, private schools, to get them in, to get them scholarships, so that they can actually benefit from that. And it, and it is, I mean, it's, it's a challenge. And I think it does get back to, you know, and I just, I just want to salute the arts community for how they have worked with us, both Julie and others. Unlike a lot of folks who like to just come out with declarations of what we should do and what it should look like, you have folks in Baltimore City who are partnering with us around what we actually have. But the bottom line is, you know, when you don't, you don't start in elementary school, I mean, I think the fact that we're trying to expand in middle school, to me, says, says loads. When many people I talk to around Baltimore City, many children who go to schools in other jurisdictions, they get their first instrument beyond a recorder. When they're in fourth grade, you pick your instrument. You play recorder starting in first. I got my first recorder in first grade. My sister's kids got first recorder in first grade. My nephew picked the sax in fourth, went on to middle school, had two bands that he auditioned for, and went to, and now attends a high school where there are four levels of jazz bands. And it is, so when we talk about opportunity, like, I'm not just saying it to say it, but it impacts everything. And I remember saying at city council, like, you know, don't, I don't want anybody talking to me about where the citywide orchestra is. We don't have a citywide orchestra, because the only young people who get access to strings, right, are in a handful of schools or have twigs. If we did not have BSA and twigs, I don't know, and Julie may know this better than I would, and if you, if you combine twigs and Orchids, you are covering about three-quarters of the instrumental music in Baltimore City Public Schools. Am I underestimating, Jill?
I bet that's pretty accurate.
Yeah. But, oh, no, but not three-quarters of the students, but, but the program. So when we talk about music, instrumental music, three-quarters of what we're talking about is through twigs and Orchids. And to the earlier point, when you look, when you look at which high schools, you know, Dunbar is one of the sustaining, comprehensive high schools, and that's because of literally the sheer dedication of faculty. So, I mean, you know.
Somebody should give Charles fun, a real man.
Yeah. I mean, he's the ma, I mean, we are do, we are doing it off of the backs, quite frankly, of incredibly dedicated teachers and, and arts institutions that have just decided to dig in, you know, which is why for Orchids, you know, it's, it's a great, but, you know, Maren, she, she called Interlochen because she just couldn't take middle school kids not having anywhere outside of, so, you know, our kids, I think it's fabulous they're going to Interlochen, but, you know, she can only do, you know, what, what she can do, you know, there. And I, and I just, you know, it's, you know, and again, it's a small crowd, so I guess I can do this, but it, it's actually quite depressing to, to look and to know, right, how you actually, we know what it takes to seed excellence, and we just haven't invested in the seed. And, and that, that's, that's what it takes. So no, we will not have a citywide string orchestra until, and so I'm not going to piece together one, we're not going to have a citywide string orchestra until we actually invest in, in that. And, and it takes money. So if people say it doesn't take money, well, okay, then tell me, as I write the check for Francesca Santalisis's violin lessons, because that actually takes some cash. So if I, if anybody knows where I can get it for free, let me know.
Well, don't be depressed, because we have a very good committee.
You have a fabulous committee.
On this.
Absolutely.
And well, specifically on the instrumental music right now. And the out-of-school time piece is also, you know, across the board, you know, so, and I, you know, the fact that there's, this, you know, the level of understanding and interest that there is, I really have, you know, I think that some, some feasible solutions can be found. All of us are very aware of the budget situations, and you know, you see us at the Kerwin meetings and everything, too.
Thank you. I'm going to open to see if, I see four other bodies back there. So if anyone would like to come up to speak, I'm going to give you the opportunity.
And I will, I'm just, Madam Chair, I need to go to the Northeast Community Meeting, so I'm going to leave and go do that. Thank you.
Hello? Am I on? Okay. Hi, I'm Diamond Tate Brown. I'm the president of the Baltimore Teachers Union, and I wanted to say first that I appreciate Courtney saying that, did I say it right? That we want to put the priorities before the numbers. I think that's very impactful, and I think that's an important way to start. Also, I appreciate the district attempting to educate. Well, what I want to add is that we want to not only ask the community about priorities, but I think that district leadership also needs to educate the community on the barriers and other options. Because sometimes when we have conversations about priorities, if the, if, if the priorities and our monies don't line up, our conversation stops there instead of, "We don't have the money for this," but as Commissioner James Hassan alluded to, "But what about these partnerships? Or what about this corporation that we can access? Or what are some other ways we can still get this done?" But it's not going to come from our budget. And I think educating the community on what those barriers are and other options is very helpful, because it creates hope instead of hopelessness. I wanted to offer the union, the union support on turnout, but we need a heads-up on community events and a direct ask. Like, "We are having this event, can you guys, can you help us turn out this many people?" And I also want to offer that guidance to the district, that, you know, when we, as an organizer, when we talk about turnout, that's very, very important. So saying community outreach, community engagement, that's all a broad term, but in order to really fill rooms, you have to know the terms that fall under that, like turnout, goal, have goals. So how many people do we want to turn out? Because if it just remains open, like, we want the public to come, that's just not enough to engage a community that has grown a distrust or mistrust for our district. So it has to be very intentional. If we want to get a hundred people in this room, we need to be reaching out to five-hundred. And that can't just be through a website and through flyers. And so there, the same way we have strategic plans on everything else, something as simple as turnout has to have a strategic plan. And so, one, I'm offering out support, but I'm also urging district leadership to dig a little bit deeper into turning people out versus how you communicate about what's happening. Because you guys spend a lot of time, and we really appreciate it, trying to figure out what's the best way to communicate things are happening. But I think we have to leverage that, we're putting the same energy into, "I'm going to make sure I get ten people in this room." It needs to be that, that, that broken down. We want a hundred, you get ten, you get ten, you get ten. You know? So just offering that up as an organizer, and if we know about events ahead of time, we can help promote them, we can help with turnout. But we can't, it can't be communicated to us the same way everyone else finds out about it. Like, I found out about this the same way everyone else found out. And I didn't even really know if it was still happening, because there was no buzz about it. So we were looking like, "Is it still happening? Are they really doing it?", you know? So.
Thank you. And we will take you up on your offer.
Okay. And one last thing, I wanted to say that I'm very happy to hear about differentiation being discussed when we're talking about giving principals autonomy. I think that's important.
Thank you. Thanks again. This is, offer's going once, going twice, three times? Okay. All right. Then, if you don't, I mean, no, no one is forcing you, but if you'd like to.
Everybody looks at me like Joe.
This may never happen again, you know?
I know. At one time, I'm going to be quiet. I guess on behalf of PCAB, I just want to, everybody take a deep breath, you know? I think you all are doing a great job as our school board. I want to reaffirm that, our teachers, our principals, our teachers' union, our advocates, everybody's doing a great job. Just keep at it. I think that, you know, the public discourse can get frustrating as a parent. And I think that, I guess I'll use my time for PCAB, just to reaffirm the work you all are doing and keep up the good work. We were talking about the arts earlier in Interlochen, my daughter actually had the privilege to go to Interlochen this summer for free. Like, don't judge us, we don't have that kind of money. But it was thanks to, thanks to organizations like Orchids and twigs and, and just people really putting that in front of my children. So my daughter didn't pick up a clarinet until fifth grade and hated music prior to that, right? I tried to teach her piano, and she didn't like it. But due to her teachers really encouraging her, Orchids and, and going to twigs, she is now just at BSA studying clarinet. And so I think that, that's hats off to the people organizing it. But we're doing some great work in the district, and I just want to just keep, just keep encouraging you all, you know, keeping the smiles on. I think a lot of parents are behind you all. Even with the issues, we're still here helping move our district forward for our children. Yeah, that's all I got. Cool.
Can I sit down now?
So I'll just take the opportunity, then, to invite you all to our Board Policy Forum on the procurement policy, which is happening December twelfth at 6:00 PM in this room. So it'll be another conversation like this, and at that conversation, we really hope to get, like, pine, like, what's the idea? What are the possibilities? What are the opportunities that we can leverage through procurement? So place that on your calendar, we'd love to see you all there.
December twelfth.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diamond Tate, I'm sorry, Madam President, let's, let's shoot for forty, okay? Because I see four heads out there nodding, like, I can do that. So we'll do the ten, 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 and if each of us try and get two, you know, we'll, we'll run it.
Can I just jump in and say two? We have two more in between those, just for the benefit of the public. On October twenty-ninth, we have a war for one policy, JKA. There's currently a revision of that policy in the policy revision process.
And JKA stands for, for the listening public?
Behavioral Intervention in Student Discipline.
Thank you. Not everybody lives in letters, like some of us.
Yes. So that'll be in this room from six to eight. And Diamond, I'm also going to send you an email with the rest for the school year. So thank you for your offer. And also, November twentieth, we have a board forum on the Board's Legislative Platform, where the community will have opportunity to kind of weigh in and let the board know what do they want them to be fighting for in Annapolis. So please also attend that one, and that'll be here at 5:30.
What day was that again?
November twentieth.
Yeah. And again, I want to thank you again. I mean, I said we're going to take you up on it, but I'm being very serious. I do, I do feel, agree with you that we need to, especially our, our recognized groups, we need to give you some different type of notice and invitation and request to help us in terms of, of turnout. So we definitely will, will, will take that as a, as something that we will do. And I'm going to say to all of you who are here tonight, you know, we've been talking about the fact that, that all that we could do and, and sort of this, we don't want to feel a spirit of despair, however, we know that we need funding. And you've heard what has come from the commission that looked at the funding formula for the Kerwin Commission work, and recommendations were shared. There is a meeting that is going to be held in Baltimore on October the twenty-fourth at Dorothy Height Elementary Middle School. And I, I would say to everybody in this room, and anybody who's listening, if you can bring ten people with you to that, that's an important place to be. The last time, it's not the actual commission, there'll be some commissioners there, but the last time there was a meeting held in Baltimore, when the, when the commission was traveling, we had the largest, I think, turnout, they said, of, of any of those sessions. So I think we, we definitely need that for, for this one. I, I believe it begins about, I don't want to be wrong in my time, I'm going to say six. Thank you. But just, that, that's, that's an important time. And again, we will, we thank you for being with us tonight. We thank anyone who is watching tonight. Please take a look at the presentation that is posted. Those steps are very important. Please understand that, that our focus for this is looking at priorities and the importance of all of our stakeholders, shareholders, community, family, whatever you want to call yourself in terms of, of working with the system, having the opportunity to be engaged in that discussion. And with that, we are dismissed, and we'll say goodnight for the, for this evening. Thanks again.